All right. We're going to get the meeting started, so if we can settle down our voices. Could do that clap once if you hear me, clap twice thing, because that's brilliant. All right, so at 6:02, we will call our meeting to order. Stephanie, would you be able to take attendance?
Becky Beisel.
Here.
Brian Davis.
Here.
Lisa Hadeen.
Here.
Scott Gergen is absent tonight. Stephanie Malm here. Dave Pembel.
Here.
And Kelsey Waits.
Here. And Director Gergen would just like me to mention that the only reason he is not here tonight is because he is out of town for a family funeral. So he did want to make sure that the community was aware that there was a reason for him to be gone. So with that, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up is an approval of the minutes from the November 23, 2021 regular board meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Right, motion carries. So I would like to recognize that we have a full house here tonight with a lot of visitors who have come to watch the board meeting, and I imagine there are also many people joining us online, so thank you for joining us. We also did have a full listening session prior to the board meeting with members of the community coming to speak on behalf of not eliminating anything from the music program in our budget adjustment discussions. So thank you for being here and thank you for using your voices to advocate. All right, next is announcements and recognitions.
Yeah, tonight, this being our last regular board meeting, I know we have a special meeting next week, I would like to take a moment and recognize Dave Pembel and Kelsey Waits for your service to the school board and the amount of time, energy, work, thought, questioning, and just devotion you've given to not only the school district, the students of the school district, but the families of the school district. And so with that, just offering a well wish into the next endeavors. And again, thank you for the time that you've put on the school board, serving the community and the students and families of ISD 200. With that, I have the stadium blanket that we give to outgoing board members and would open the floor up to any other board members who would want to make a comment at this time.
Thank you so much, Dave and Kelsey, for everything over the last two years. Dave, you were the first person to reach out to me when I was bright eyed and bushy tailed and a brand new board member and thinking, oh my goodness, what did I get myself into? But you led me through all of the procedural intricacies that come with the board, and it is a very complex system, so I'm very appreciative for that. You have been a very valued voice on this team, and I'm very thankful for having met you and for your mentorship. Kelsey, I'm happy to call you a friend, and you have worked tirelessly over the last two years and taught me what it means to be dedicated to this district. You've done it with grace and poise, and there have been some really tough decisions and very difficult moments, but you always come to this table level headed and with a smile, and I'm very thankful that I have gotten to meet you.
First of all, Dave, just like Stephanie, you were the first to reach out to me in terms of, once I became a board member, and I want to thank you for inviting me and opening your home to me. Wasn't even in a general place, you had me come to your home, and you served me coffee and then handed me the largest stack of paper I have ever seen. Not too intimidating or anything, but I really wanted to thank you for that, and thank you for all the time you've committed and dedicated to this district, so thank you so much for that. Kelsey, as you know, you got me into this, and I couldn't be more grateful that you did, coming to me and asking me to consider running way back when, it seems like forever ago now, but I'm grateful you did that, and I'm grateful that I ran, and I'll always be grateful to you for being such a rock and being such a tremendous leader, and I will always be indebted to you for encouraging me to be a part of what we're doing right here, so thank you, thank you both.
Dave, you reached out to me the first time, too. We had coffee. I appreciate that, you took me under your wing, you explained a lot of the policy, everything that happens. I was a bright eyed, bushy tailed person, too, I think, very naive on what a board member was, so I really appreciate you sitting me down. I didn't get a stack of papers, thank goodness. You probably knew I would be too overwhelmed, but I appreciate you reaching out, taking me under your wing, explaining, being there for all my questions, concerns, anything. And Kelsey, you were my mentor even before I came a board member. I came to you with a lot of concerns even before I was even considering being a board member, and you're one of the reasons why I ran to be a board member. You were there for all the text messages, phone calls, even when I was running, while I was running, and for the last two years. I really appreciate you being an amazing mentor, and I've never would have gotten through these two years without you. You'll be greatly missed.
Kelsey, I've just really valued your insights into the board, and you know, we have not always seen eye to eye, and there have been a lot of long conversations, and there's been a lot of emails back and forth and phone calls, and that has been so valuable. It's been so valuable in what I've learned personally, and I think it's been so valuable in how we've been able to serve the district together. And I just really appreciate so much your ability to stay present in difficult conversations and your ability to keep your eye on the prize of the students and all of the families served by your district. I think that's just such a valuable perspective, and it's served us so, so well in the last four years, so thank you. And I know it will serve you well going forward, that high integrity. And Dave, the depth of your knowledge about this community and this school district and understanding what the true values of our district are, and your willingness to serve not just as a board member, but also on 917, which is, it's fabulous that you've represented us so well and brought your insights to that larger regional role, and then again, that you're serving also with the city. You have the heart of a servant, you have a heart of a public servant, and you lead with values and you lead with an incredible work ethic, and that will be so greatly missed. Thank you for giving us those four years.
Anyway, thank you. It has been my honor to serve this district. It has been an incredible opportunity, and it has spurred, I mean, even going back to graduate school to study politics, and just my love of all of this at the table and writing policies, and so thank you just for four years of being able to work together as a wonderful team. It has been fantastic.
I guess I have a hard time saying, you know, that it's time to go, but I've got a few years in, and I've been basically, I've got three grandchildren, and time commitments are getting difficult, and it just, it was really hard for me to say, no, I'm not going to run. I've had my fingers in this community, this school district, this part of the county for the last 40 years, maybe a little bit longer, and it's tough to say, you've served your time, but I'm saying that I've served my time, and thank you for the support the folks have given me over the years. I much appreciate it. I think that, you know, we can work through our difficulties and make the community, the school district, and this area, an outstanding community. Thank you.
Okay. So with that, we will move into our items for discussion, beginning with policies that are up for a second reading. As a reminder to board members and the community, after the second reading, if we feel comfortable with them, we can take a motion to move them to an action item. So first is Policy 103, Complaints, Students, Employees, Parents, and Other Persons. And so each of these policies were brought up last month, so just a couple weeks ago, and the policy committee met the next week, and we made changes based on what we saw. So Policy 103 is the one that we actually made the most changes to, and that was really trying to tighten it up and get rid of some of the repetition that we had seen in there and really worked to clean it up. So are there any questions or comments on Policy 103? Okay, seeing none. Is there a motion to move this to an action item?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The next policy up is 203.2, Order of the Regular School Board Meeting, and so really the adjustment to this was the policy title name instead of 203B. It's been switched to .2 for consistency.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So is there any discussion on this one? Or do we have a motion to move this to an action item?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Policy 215, Addressing School Board Member Violations. This one didn't really have any adjustments from our policy committee or from our meeting last month, so is there any questions this time around or comments? Okay, seeing none. Do we have a motion to move this to an action item?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Then we have Policy 401. This is the Equal Employment Opportunity, and so if you recall, this is where we had kind of pulled out how to file complaints. So, are there any comments on this? All right, is there a motion to move this to an action item?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Policy 402, Employment Nondiscrimination. There any questions or comments on this one? All right, seeing none, is there a motion to move this to an action item?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Policy 412, Expense Reimbursement. So there was a question about conference request at the last school board meeting, and so what we ended up doing is striking that because really the request to attend a conference is going to go through supervisors, not through the board. So are there any comments or questions on Policy 412? Okay, seeing none. Is there a motion to move this to an action item?
So moved.
Is there any discussion on the motion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next, Policy 499. This is the COVID vaccination emergency, should the federal government end up requiring vaccinations for employees. And so again, based in Section 3 scope, this is only in effect if legally required. I just want to make sure to repeat that whenever we discuss this, so. Are there any questions or comments on this policy? Okay, seeing none. Is there a motion to move this to an action item?
So moved.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Right, motion carries. Oh, sorry, I missed one. I missed 412.1. So we'll go back there and hit that one up. So Policy 412.1, Administrative Procedures and Tracked Changes. So you'll notice, opening it up, we just have that purpose statement there added, and then again, making sure this was .1 instead of A. So any questions or comments on this reading of the policy? All right, with that, do we have a motion to move this to an action item?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Right, motion carries. So now we'll move down to Policy 601.1, Curriculum Advisory Committee, Purpose, Role, and Membership. So on this one, we don't have any changes for this one from the last meeting. So do we have any comments? Otherwise, do we have a motion to move this to an action item?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Policy 606.1, Textbooks and Instructional Materials for the Responsibility of Selection. This one again also did not have changes from our last board meeting. Are there any comments? Do we have a motion to move this to an action item?
So moved. Second.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. Policy 606.2, now this one has just the minor addition of adding in a media specialist into the committee for review. So do we have any comments or questions on this? Do we have a motion to move it to an action item?
So moved.
Any discussion on the motion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So the next item for discussion is the Board Meeting Calendar Draft for 2022.
So this is just one of those topics we decided we'd put up for discussion prior, so as we're moving into the, in a new way of doing things and staying a little bit more organized, so this is the calendar for potential board meetings for 2022, really just up for discussion if there's any dates that you've seen that are going to be problematic before we hit the January meeting. The reason for bringing it here was so that we could have a little bit more discussion, only if needed. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Chair Waits.
I do see that in November, again, the meeting would be moved to Tuesday, the regular board meeting, before Thanksgiving, rather than the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, just to point that out as kind of the non-Wednesday.
Do we have our retreats on here? We have two of them next year, correct?
The dates of the retreats are not yet on there for the larger retreats. We said we would, correct, we said we would do two, and the other thing that is, as we've met with TeamWorks to try and figure out dates for time with TeamWorks, those will be on Wednesday night, so I'm assuming those will end up being different than what we will end up calling retreats, but that's probably going to have to be a bigger discussion just because if the retreat's going to fall on a Friday evening, a Saturday, something like that, we're going to need to have calendars out and be ready to walk through what's going to work and what's not going to work.
Yeah, and I think the new board members should be there for that, to make sure it's going to work with their schedules.
Oh, absolutely, I just thought there was an email that went through about.
Yeah, that's definitely something that we'll have to bring up at the January meeting is just everybody plan on looking out there, bring your calendar.
Okay.
Also, the organizational meeting is not on here. The work session is, but the organizational meeting is not.
That's the same date.
Oh, it's going to be the same day?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so it'll open with an organizational meeting, and then that closes, and then we go into the work session for whatever the work session topics will be. It could have been a fourth caller, I suppose, calendar.
So any other discussion on the calendar? All right, I'm not seeing anything, so then we will move into the budget adjustment discussion.
All right, so as we begin the discussion tonight, we've had many discussions administratively, we've taken the input that the board had given last week and tried to refine and modify and adjust, and as everyone's aware, we also have lots of feedback that we've gotten from community, and so the first couple of slides are just reminders, as we've done every budget discussion, that we are working off of a guiding change, trying to best understand what's desirable, feasible, as well as sustainable over time. And really what we're looking at is a total of $1.3 million adjustment for the 2223 year, however, you'll see in parentheses there that I've added, based on our conversation the last couple of times, that 1.6, that's inclusive of that tech set aside, so we've got budget adjustments, but for those that are new to the conversation... So we've got budget adjustments, but for those that are new to the conversation or haven't been aware, that there's also a technology sustainable plan set aside, which you'll see it's 1.6 because we're making a recommendation that we drop from 400 to 300, which the board's going to have to have some further discussion about. So at this time, where we are, kind of a summary of adjustment areas under conversation, we still have the $650,000 that the board has been talking about putting in. We've got $50,000 in potential athletics and activity fees, for the most part. We'll get into some details of that later. We have the right sizing conversation, which the board has gone over and over and over at the three different levels. And then we've got a between, we started at 78,000, and the request was to increase that to a potential 250,000 in secondary programming adjustments. And then you'll see I've added on there ESER 2 and ESER 3 to the amount of 172,000, which I'll talk a little bit about later with the potential additional option. And then to keep things just together, on the right-hand side there, I've got that 300,000 for the technology sustainability plan, which really, based on the board's conversation and trying to navigate between how much do we take out of fund balance for budget adjustments, and how much do we want to add to that technology set aside that's already there in the tune of a little over $900,000. That maybe an appropriate level to start discussing at this time would be that 300,000. So just a little reminder that in one slide where we are with right sizing, we're looking at between 2 and 3 FTE at the elementary level. We're looking at between 2.6 and 3.1 at the middle level, and we're looking at what originally was a .5, but the reductions and adjustments that were shown actually add up to a .6. So right now, low end to high end, we're looking at between a 5.2, 6.7 FTE reduction, and you can see that that equates to just over 400,000 to just over 522,000 if all works out based on the assumptions for the right sizing and projected numbers. So the activities and athletics detail slide, we didn't change anything here. The board talked about both the idea of raising athletic participation fees. The recommendations are anywhere from 33% increase to a 50% increase, which could generate between 34 and $38,000 back into the budget annually. We did talk a little bit about the idea that we have three sports at the middle school that are under 30, and what that might look like. I do know in the last week, just in contact with HYA, you know, maybe softball, baseball. I don't know what we would do with girls' basketball and tennis at this point. We'd really have to look at that. And as you can see in that, you've had conversations, it's that to whom at what cost, right? That's a lot of sports not there for 18,000, and that's what the board, I think, was weighing last week, is that really at this time what we want to do? And then, nothing's changed with activity fees for the middle school, just the knowledge that we would start charging for activities at the middle school. Our goal was a total of $50,000 in this area, and we're somewhere between 44.5 and 66.5 would be the options here. And then the secondary programming options, this is kind of a summary slide of where we left off last week. Just simplified, so on the left-hand side, you can see the areas that the board discussed, what the FTE could be generated as a reduction, and then how that equates to an approximate dollar value on the right. And so at the bottom, you can see in the end, if all of this went into play, you have a potential of a 358,000, a little bit over 358,000 in reduction options on this slide. So some additional information that was asked for at the meeting was specific to music. And so I know that they're out there, so I want to thank our music department and our administrators for figuring out how to get details to me, and I have done my best to try and put this into a number slide with regard to lessons. And so I did some checking this morning, and I think I've got it right on the right-hand side, but essentially to answer the question that was asked on Wednesday is, what's been the historical enrollment in music areas? What's our FTE currently? And then there was a conversation about lessons, about understanding what, for the most part, happens with lessons, and so you can see that on the right-hand side. I think it's important to note that the lessons on the right-hand side are considered required, so that would be, that's where, that's the bare minimum, and that there are open slots throughout the school year where there are multiple kids that take additional lessons up above and beyond what you see on the right-hand side for music. This slide is the same slide that it has always been, except for you'll see at the bottom, like you've seen the last two times, there's been an adjustment to that number, and this is what I've talked about a couple of times already, where we've, we're down to about $300,000 is what we would recommend for that technology sustainability plan. Again, this is assuming a five-year cycle in planning, and then an influx of devices for kindergarten and fifth and ninth graders on an annual basis. So, if you can take a look at the option with ESER dollars for tonight, and the line of thought that we're at is, based on the conversation that was had last week, if we assume the right sizing adjustments of the 522,000, a little bit over that, we assume that we would just do the fees in middle school and not the reduction of the sports. And then we look at somewhere between, back down to the 78,000 or potentially 2 FTE, and offsetting that with ESER dollars for this next year. And then maintaining the 650 that the board had talked about, we would be well within the bounds of what the board was shooting for with regard to the 1.3 million. And so I guess that's where I would lean to start the discussion for the board tonight is opening up the option of, should we look at using some of the ESER dollars and wait for the high school program review to come in? We, that's where the conversation ended last Wednesday, was right on the start of that, do we wait for the program review and then see where that plays out before we would go too much farther into this? And so this is a solution that we've come up with to try and get to that. And so with that, I would open it up to questions, comments from the board, and I can flip back between the slides.
So I guess Scott did write me, so I will make sure to share his input. He also does not want to look at cutting the sports, those couple sports at the middle school, that it is not, $18,000 is not a very high number for the impact that that could have on the students. He is okay if we need to add something more to the fund budget. As far as programming goes, before making adjustments to programming, Scott would like us to wait for that program review to go through, since we do know that it is coming soon. And so one of, like, one in particular, he mentioned music, but also yearbook, that he is concerned that if yearbook moves to an after-school activity with no credit, that there really isn't going to be an advisor who's going to be able to do that work. So that was one in particular, as well as the music. I will say, for myself, one thing I'm kind of curious about after the listening session earlier is that a number of community members mentioned how our music program, you know, brings people into the district, and as we're talking about decreasing enrollment. And I am curious if there's a way to find out information for, say, people who open enroll into Hastings, you know, what is it about Hastings that brings people to open enroll? And one of the discussions we've had is looking at who chooses to enroll out, and what are the reasons people are enrolling out of the district? But I would also be curious then to see the flip side, and what brings people in to open enroll into our district? That I think that may be information that would be good to know and understanding, you know, is this, you know, bringing people in? So, that's something that came up in the listening session.
First of all, I just want to say, thank you to everybody out there. I don't think I have done so much reading in last week as I've gotten to do this week, because I read every single one of your emails. One of the things that I do want to put out there is that, just based on what we're seeing and some of your recommendations, Superintendent McDowell, I would, number one, just, and I'll be honest, full disclosure, my daughter has done orchestra, and she had to back out of that because she decided she wanted to do plays and musicals and show choir, you know, there's only so much you can do. But she was part of just about every music thing you can imagine, with the exception of band, and my son Drew covered that one. So I'm very, very versed in music, and I also was a percussionist myself in college. So, the idea of reducing lessons, I am not in favor of. I don't think, honestly, to be candid, I don't think there's enough lessons as it is. Looking at this number and looking how many there are that we do per semester, I'm glad that children are taking those empty blocks and taking advantage of them. And my understanding is that through those kids taking advantage of additional blocks and such, they're getting that additional work in, and those blocks are getting filled. It's not like they're sitting empty. So the instructors that are handling that are getting quite a bit of work out and doing that. So I would be opposed to that, number one. It looks like by using ESER dollars that we would have an opportunity to do the programmatic review. Along with that programmatic review, one of the things I am very interested in knowing, and I understand that as you move up toward the high school level, there are a myriad of things that children can choose to do. But I would be interested in getting some feedback during that year, if indeed we go this direction, of, I noticed that there's a significant reduction in the number of kids in orchestra at the middle school level to high school. So I know there's a ton of different choices. I'd just be interested in maybe even polling some of these kids to determine, come freshman or they don't want to do it anymore, why is that? Because I think that we need to get those numbers up, obviously, and I want to see those numbers go up, because it's there, and then it's not there. And it's not just music, it happens in sports, too. I understand that, you see this across the board, but I would be interested in knowing if through spending a year of looking at it, what we can learn about it through that period of time, as we're trying to figure out some of these things. So I'm just putting that out there to say, you know what? Lessons, you know, I think that's something that's very, very important, and I know that's what we're looking at, but I, you know, without the lessons, then the quality of everything that comes after those lessons goes away along with it. So I want to make sure that we're able to do that. I also, like Kelsey, was compelled, additionally, I already was by a lot of the emails I read, but by some of the pieces I heard tonight about some things that attract people here. And I know Hastings is very well-known for its music program. It is, it wins a lot of state titles, it does things like that. It's a connector for kids. One of the parents and I said, "They don't cut people." Well, you're right, there's no cuts. I mean, these are big things for kids that are trying to find their place, and they don't want to sit at the end of a bench and things like that. And don't get me wrong, I'm not disparaging sports, that's not where I'm going with this. But I'm saying there's an option that these kids are allowed to have through that program, and I think it's important, for as long as humanly possible, to keep those things intact. To Kelsey's point, maybe to draw people in, because lord knows, with the events that have happened over the last couple of weeks, your diminishing enrollment is going to accelerate. So we have to find something to try to reenact that, get it back, push back the other direction, start getting these kids back in here.
I think we owe it to the students to allow the ESER dollars to be used this year, and to wait for the secondary programming to come through and see what we can and cannot do. I think it's, we, it's too early to jump to just to cut these programs and wait till the secondary programming, everything comes through. I think we owe it to students and families in the community to kind of hold off and use the one-time ESER dollars for this until we know for sure what we can and can't do for next year.
Lisa, you look thoughtful.
I am. That's also how I look when I'm listening. You've never seen it before, so that's probably why it's confusing.
Can I have this way? I forgot a screen was behind me.
I know, I'm like super focused on Brian.
Yeah, I got that.
Like that. It does feel a little weird, that's why occasionally I turn around to look at this slide. I appreciate everything that's been said and all the emails that I've received. I do struggle slightly with solving the entirety of our budget adjustments with ESER dollars. When you go back to our guiding change document, we said we wouldn't do that. Right? We weren't going to fill the gap with COVID money, and this is COVID money. I will acknowledge that we are in an interesting intersection of experiences, and that intersection is budget adjustment combined with an anticipated 912 secondary program review, and being in the process of a 58 program review. So that being said, I am comfortable, so for purposes of the discussion, I am comfortable with our right sizing adjustments. I am comfortable with fees on middle school athletics and activities, and I'm comfortable with those being established, you know, near to that 50% rate, that they're concurrent or near to, well, not equivalent, because we heard some really high numbers last week, but that they're notably higher than they are now, acknowledging that we'll do what we need to do to scholarship people and maintain engagement. I would not support cutting a program at this point, at the middle school. I do not support cutting programs at the high school. So I do not support eliminating orchestra. If we could go to the secondary program slide? Thank you. I do think that it is responsible because we to ask the high school to make at least one FTE reduction. We asked them to make an eight FTE reduction last year, which I don't think was completely achieved, and we're backfilling with ESER dollars some now. I think we need to make that ask. That being said, the alternatives that were provided, I would agree, yearbook is not, I mean, we already took the career and counseling off for consideration, I would take yearbook off for consideration. I would take the music modifications off for consideration. I need to caveat that. Every year that I've been on the board, for the 10 years I've been on it, we've been doing budget adjustments, some have been much more painful than others. And for at least the last six to eight of those years, music has been protected, has been expressly protected. And I'm going to have to say that it is probable that music is going to have to be asked in future years, because I don't see us changing our projection, notably, to look at how they can provide the service they have at a lower cost. And we are one of the few districts that still does this many individual lessons. And we need to think about and prepare to have a really meaningful conversation about what that looks like going forward, because it cannot, it can't stay unchanged. I think it is unlikely that it can stay unchanged into the future, and that's really unpleasant to say, but I believe it is true. So I would like to see going forward from tonight that we ask the high school if, so then I get down, sorry, I have one more if. So then I get down to social studies and FIAID are the two proposed FTE cuts. And I personally would prioritize the academic program of social studies right now above the physical education and health. And if we were to ask for a reduction of an FTE in physical education, it leaves us .5 above the state requirement, and it leaves, social studies .5 above the state requirement, and it would allow some flexibility when we hear back from the program. So that's what I would ask going forward, and I would, I would ask the high school to consider, is that, is that the FTE cut that they would support, and could they provide us something upon further reflection and what they've heard from the community that would be an FTE equivalent? Someplace else, now that they've had more time to reflect, I don't know. But I just can't see us taking all of this solution out of ESER and general fund, so much of it out of ESER and general fund, because I'm going to be sitting at this table in a year, and it's going to be really, really tough. I feel like we have to make some movement. Thank you.
And Scott did say he is comfortable with the FIAD reduction, not the social studies reduction. So that is in agreement with your thoughts. I would still like to point out that should the levy not pass in two years, when we want to talk about what sort of reductions look like and where those reductions come from, that that would be millions of dollars. And so that is an important thing as we talk about keeping programs. And I do think that's important as we're having this discussion and this very tough discussion tonight when we have a room full of community members, that they do understand the importance of the levies in this district for these programs that set Hastings aside, that set us apart. That this is something really important that we need to be aware of and to acknowledge.
And so I, I would agree. I am in line with what you said, Brian, and with what Lisa said, that since we are in this intersection where we have this full programmatic review coming, I know I will not be here in a year when we're, when we're looking at this again. But I do think that to really have this discussion and talking about programming in this way, that we need to have a better view of the full scope of what we're looking at. And I think that would come from the programmatic review.
So just to, to clarify, I agree that, that we'll hear a lot from that programmatic review and we'll see, we'll probably identify some areas across the whole secondary's program that we might, might not have been providing services that we need to. I mean, you get in a habit of doing what you do and I think that's possible. But do you see as we go, come into next week, when we would likely, when we would need to make, take action, that you would support looking at a FTE reduction in FIAD for next year and then making the necessary, and we, if, should it get approved, we'd have to make the policy changes?
I would support that, yes.
Thank you for your clarification.
Lisa, I just want to make sure I'm clear on something in terms of how you put it. So you are saying, just so I'm clear, that you're, you want to see social studies stay at four years for the next year and FIAD be reduced to 1.5 until the program review is completed?
So for next year, yes, that's correct. I would like to see social studies stay at four. Of the, of the list that was provided to us, I'd like to see social studies stay at four and FIAD health, um, go to 1.5. And I don't know what will come out of the next discussion. I can't project the 23-24 budget adjustment conversation. And that will have to start with a new baseline. I, I don't know if it would be for how long it would go or if it would go down or back up again, I'm not sure. But that's what I, that's for the purposes of the 2023 conversation, 22-23 conversation, that's correct.
So that's a modification then on what, what district, whoops, that's a modification on what the district has come back with, which was to reduce that by half a year, which means that our overall reductions or cuts would be a little bit less because you'd be going back to four years from the 3.5. I'm just making sure I'm, I'm looking at this financially correctly, that that number reduces a little bit.
I'm not, I'm not following that piece. So if you, can we go back to the slide with the categories? That's, I'm sorry, um, no, the cumulative one. So what we see right here is there's ranges. I would like, I am willing to accept on the secondary program line, a reduction of 78,000. And I would, of the list that was provided, available alternatives provided, the one that is most palatable to me is reducing our FIAD and health graduation requirement. And I am willing to accept, although I have a fair amount of reservation, the Esser dollars of, um, as needed to meet our 1.3 or get up, get up to around our 1.6. I, I'm willing to accept that. I am worried about next year, but I'm willing to accept it because of the, of the intersection of the program review with budget adjustment. I am not willing to have secondary programming be zero and have all of the rest of it fixed on Esser. I don't think that's responsible.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Um, so I spoke on music, obviously, because that was a big topic for the night. But I have to say, I concur with Lisa on the FIAD piece. I'd like to respectfully disagree on the yearbook, only in that I don't want yearbook cut, but I'm wondering if there's a way to pivot in terms of potentially maybe making it part of journalism. And you, that would take the point too, and you'd still have it being for credit, if you will, as it, as it sits currently. I, I'd like to see us try to be creative before we dip into, to your point, dip into all the Esser dollars. I'd like to see some creativity behind where, how we're attacking this.
Yeah, and I'm willing to, I'd be open to that and I think the high school would be open to looking at ways to, to maybe finding a cost savings there. I know we've had yearbook years ago as a extracurricular activity and it was challenging. So as long as there's, we're looking at ways, in high school, in this case, the high school is looking at ways to keep it in as a curricular program. I'm, I'm open to it being restructured or a combined class because I think that's not uncommon at the high school to have some combined classes.
I do think it's something we could check in with Rachel on, um, as curriculum director, but it's something that I'd at least like to explore because as I'm looking at some of this, I'm looking at that piece, for example, and saying, there might be a creative solution to it. And I look at the social studies piece and I don't know 100% agree with leaving it four. Um, I'd have to really understand fully what that 0.5 represents before I would vote on that piece. Because I'd have to be confident that that 0.5 isn't found somewhere within the, the, the being of what else our school does before we just summarily say, well, just stay at four and just leave it alone. Or the question that, and Mike had brought up last week of, well, that half FTE for that second year of FIAD is used for more of the, uh, mental health stuff. It's more of the, it's not the human performance side. It's more of that. Well, I would argue that that mental health piece should be for freshmen. That should be as you're coming in the door. So is there a way to also maybe do a tweaking of that curriculum so you can get down to one year of FIAD? I just want to see some creativity because I agree with you. I don't want hell coming out of Esser either.
Okay, I was just going to say, I think my understanding of what Mike said, and, and I think this is a piece we can get a little more information on before we vote next week, is ninth and 10th grade would stay a semester of health and a semester of human performance and 10th grade would be semester of health and, and no semester, associated semester of human performance. I would also be open from a flexibility and management perspective of not requiring it to happen in 10th grade. I, I appreciated the points that Mike made, but if we're trying to give kids some flexibility, 10th grade is a, is a pinch year and we all know it, right? It's a pinch between Abbott and global language and multiple musics and, uh, multiple industrial texts. It is a pinch year and, and forcing that in. So I'd be willing to, I'd like to hear more about unhinging that second year of, um, health from the sophomore requirement when we come back for discussion. And I, part of the reason on a civ-, on the social studies side is I think it is sort of complicated to understand what's, where the overlaps are and it, and it feels like making a sweeping decision to recommend reducing it without a programmatic review feels less comfortable to me than, than a FIAD reduction.
Yes, Stephanie, did I see you? So otherwise, if I'm hearing this right, it sounds like maybe we have more discussion about yearbook next week to see if that can be worked into journalism or something creative from that front. FIAD continued to bring up next week, but the other programming options would be off the table for now.
For now, that's what I'm hearing. I would like, Rachel, I'm so sorry. It gives you a whole whopping week and I'm sorry. But I really want to know if there's a way we can do this. And I agree with, I just need to understand more about the, you talked about unhinging. I'd really like to understand more about this link between, um, language arts and social studies as well. Why they're inexorably linked.
That's disconnected this year.
Is it disconnected?
It only happened, well, it didn't only happen, but it happened to our kids.
Oh, it happened to our kids? And now it's not, oh, not a thing anymore.
Sure, it wasn't just about us, but it just coincidentally happened to our kids. But it's, my understanding is it's un, it's unlinked now.
Okay, alright.
Can I ask the question about the class sizes for the social studies and the FIAD? If we're reducing a huge class of FIAD and not for social studies, can we just find out the class sizes that we'd be reducing? I know my sophomore really loves the physical, the P-fit for all his extenuating classes that he has. So I would just like to know, are we taking 30-some kids times how many hours in a day? I'd just like to know the class sizes that we're thinking of reducing, just to make sure that we're thinking, I get financially, but also if we have, are all the class sizes full for social and FIAD as well?
Yeah. I think that's a good question and I think just for the community to understand, uh, when we're talking about FIAD, it's not necessarily that we're increasing the class sizes of FIAD by reducing the full-time equivalent. It's that currently Hastings requires two years of FIAD, whereas the state requirement is only one. And so we are above the state requirement. So what we would do is reduce the requirement within our own district, which would then reduce, um, the number of instructional hours we would need. But seeing if that has an impact on class sizes, I think is important.
With the mental health of the kids and being physically active and during the day as well.
That's a really interesting point, Becky, because I had always presumed, and this might be a question to get answered too, and I might, might be wrong, is that, that the, the graduation requirement component would be reduced and, but that there may be alternative, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Optional, that a student could, could choose to sign up for a, for a physical fitness type class. I know they have different names in the, at the high school, that they could choose to sign up and take credits beyond the graduation base. Which again, is going to be a, it's going to be a differentiator, right? Not every student's going to choose to do that. But we would not be stopping a 10th grade student from taking a physical fitness class. We would just not be requiring it for graduation.
elective. The word you're looking for is elective. Yeah, going to be elective, yeah.
I'd, I agree with everything that's being said. I do want to point out, and we feel like we're beating a dead horse at this point, but I'm not comfortable with the Esser dollars because that's a one-time deal. It's a Band-Aid. We're going to be sitting here with a bigger issue and the way that I've been able to like, explain it to my husband is like, in managing a household, last year we had to take a look at our utility bills. We had to maybe get rid of a few of the streaming systems. This year, we are looking at potentially selling the boat. And then next year, do we have to look at selling the house? I don't want to sell the house because that is our security. That is our, our shelter. So that's, that's the way that I'm looking at it. And this, this issue is, I don't feel like this is a solution. This is, this is just a Band-Aid. But that, that leads into, and, and this, this board over the next few years is going to have to make some very difficult decisions and be very strategic on how we do this. And, you know, the biggest thing is, is we really have to focus on those levies. And we need to focus on how can we promote, um, music? I, I fully admit that, you know, music is my entire life. Like, I love music. I was in choir and even in, I did music in, in college and it's, it's very near and dear to me. I've seen what it does for my daughter who plays cello and her confidence has just totally increased at this awkward stage in her life, um, in a really difficult time. So, and then with the sports too. It is so important that we are promoting, you know, the, the triple A's, athletics, academics and arts for that mental wellbeing. It's more than just having and, you know, going and talking to a therapist or, you know, you, being able to get out there and, and move and, and be a part of something, that belonging that all of our kids need. So this is incredibly difficult. I agree with the rightsizing, um, increasing the, the athletic fees. I'm on the lower end, like Lisa said, with the 78,000 with secondary programming. The Esser dollars, I'm not comfortable with it, but I will support it, um, knowing that we are, we can't have it all. And then the same thing with the fund balance. Again, not comfortable with it. That tech levy, and I harped on it last time too, and I'm going to continue harping on it. We need that tech levy. Otherwise, we're just gonna, we're gonna run into a lot of issues and I don't want to be at that point. I want Hastings to maintain the programs that we currently have that are, that set us aside from other districts. Because I think that's really important to, to our community growth. It's why I chose to move here, because I love this district. And the programs that are offered to my own children and to everybody's children. And if that goes away, I, I wish I had, like you said last, last week, I wish I had a crystal ball that told us what was going to happen because right now I am, I'm very concerned.
Budget cuts are not easy by any means and we've discussed at length different ways that we can make things work. Most of what I see is like, I wish we didn't have to cut anything. And, and, you know, here's a perfect example. Just looking at our audience tonight, the minute the discussion, we're talking about budget adjustments brings folks out. But we have to remember, we have a student population that is not growing. That's where the dollars are at. By the time you look at, you know, our December numbers were something like right around 4,000 pupil units. And we're going to be on the other side of 4,000 in a heartbeat. And if things keep going that way, we'll be even worse off coming. And with that in mind, all of the Band-Aids that we're trying to deal with to make things work is just, it's, it's going to come down to if we can't figure out a way to bring folks in, you know, is, I, I like what Kelsey was saying before. What is, what, you know, do we have folks coming in to our music program here from other districts? Because we provide a music program that's so good? You know, I'd like to hear those numbers. I'd like to hear what other programs that, you know, we can really work with. But folks, our problem here is we're an aging community. We don't have a lot of new births. We don't have growth in little kids that are going to get into the school system and all those present budget issues. Right now, I mean, Esser dollars, when I walked away last, two weeks ago was it, or whatever, I can't remember now. It's like, we can't, I don't see spending Esser dollars. That's not, it's like put Esser dollars to fixing windows or lights or whatever else, but to put in programs, that's one-time money. That's just pushing us back from the cliff. The, you know, the rightsizing adjustments, all those things, we're going to have to, next week, you know, bite the bullet and say, we'll make this work. And there'll be a lot of unhappy folks, but folks, we need to realize this is just the tip of the iceberg. Boards in the future will have a lot tougher times than what this current board is having tonight. And I'll be quiet.
So are there any other comments for the budget adjustment discussion tonight, Brian?
I have one last thing. Thank you, Kelsey. I'm piggybacking a little bit off of Dave, but he makes a very, very valid point, and I want to, I want to take a moment to just implore everyone to get integrated and involved on an ongoing basis. And the reason I'm saying this is this. I got a lot of great emails that are very well-written, very well-articulated, from former students, current students, parents, great things, wonderful things, so happy to see it. That kind of passion, we're going to need 24/7, every single week. We're going to need creative thought. Even if we find a way to buy us time, Dave's 100% correct. Everyone's correct. It's coming back again in a year. And next time, there's not going to be that life preserver. We are going to try like heck. That programmatic review is critical to where we get next. And I want people to reach out to us and ask us questions. And I have sat down with people, and I've sat down with this. I've walked into homes with this to say, hey, here's what we're looking at. And the reason I did that is because some of the notes we got were, I hear you're cutting music in choir. Folks, no, in any line of this, does it say we're cutting music in choir. It says we're reducing the lessons. It never said that. We have to make sure that as we go out on social media, we're not starting fires that aren't necessary. It was never on the table. Orchestra was, yes, but the other two weren't, that to be cut. So I want to make sure that as much as you have to ask us questions, you're getting the exact details and information that you need. Every single meeting by state law is open. There's nothing we can hide from you. We got to tell you everything. It's all out there, and we're more than willing to share it with you. I love seeing these folks out here. I truly do. I want to see people writing to us every single week next year. Write to your administrators, your principals. Yes, guys, I'm going to fill your email boxes with suggestions or ideas, because next year, when this rolls around, we may not be able to, we're not, may not, we won't be able to do this again like we're looking at right now. I want so badly to have everything, so badly to have everything. So we have to be creative. We have to have this programmatic review go through. We have to understand everything we're looking at, and I'm asking every one of you in the audience tonight to stay engaged, day after day, year after year. Unpleasant, drive, they're building senior living at four hundred thousand plus, they're looking at annexing down where I live on Tuttle for homes. You think those homes are going to be starter homes? No, they're going to be McMansions that nobody can afford. Same thing West of Seas. If we want to do something, we've got to find a way to drive kids into here, and it's not through any attacks on people. It's finding a way to make this a welcoming place. It's by telling the city council, hey, enough of the seven hundred thousand dollar houses. How do we get starter homes? How do we bring in new families? How can you help a city work with the school board to get things done? I need all of you, every single week. This will go away, and people forget, but we can't forget. We've got to stay on top of this, because we'll be staying on top of it every single week. Every single week, we'll be talking about it, meeting in our groups and our committees and our general sessions and our work sessions, and we'll be passionate about it, and we're going to care. The three of us are going to care. We have three more that are coming on. They're gonna, four of us, excuse me, Lisa, I'm looking at this side of the table, my bad. And there's three more that are going to come on, they're going to care. I'm begging you to stay with us during this. Please email us. Please talk to us. I will sit down with anybody, any day when I have time over coffee, and discuss any of these things to make sure everybody's on the same page. We've got to get this done as a community. I know we can, but yes, we're moving it down potentially a year, but it's going to come back uglier. And speaking of the levy, you think this is difficult? We lose that levy, it's four times this.
Four at least.
At least. Imagine that. The things we're trying to save right now, choir, band, sports, all done if it's four times this number. So I know I'm being overly passionate, I'm getting emotional about it, because my kids are in all of this stuff, and I want to keep all of this stuff because I know how much it meant to them. My daughter has an anxiety disorder. Do you know the only place she's okay is on a stage? For some reason, it goes away when she performs, when she's in show choir, she's been at Riverside, and she's a sophomore. That, for some reason, takes it away. I get it. I'm with you, 100% with you, but we've got to work together. I'm off my soapbox. I apologize.
Thank you, Brian. Superintendent McDowell, do you need any more information from the board before next week's meeting?
No, I don't think so.
Then we will move into administrative reports, beginning with the superintendent's report.
All right. For the superintendent's report tonight, I'm going to bring up our building principles. We thought that it would be appropriate, given recent events, that we have the principals speak to you about what they have in place operationally to ensure that we have the safest buildings we can possibly have, that we're meeting the needs of kids and what we do when we have kids in crisis. So I know they have a plan of attack. I'm going to ask them to come up and give their presentation in the order they've planned it out. And just a reminder, you have to hit that long horizontal bar, light screen, and then you're on.
Thanks for letting us have this opportunity to come and talk about how our schools are safe and the things that we are currently doing and things that we are looking to do in the future. I'm going to start us off with just talking a little bit about that 10,000-foot view, and then Paul will kind of get into what we do on specific things on a day-to-day basis, and Kyle will touch base about what we do for those supportive measures and some of those future things. So first of all, what we really strive to do is to foster, at the elementary level particularly, the student-to-teacher relationship. Those 25 students or so that those teachers have, we want to have that intimate relationship and to create that environment where children feel safe on a day-to-day basis, tell them everything and anything that's going on. And that is the major, major part of the elementary setting. We do that in a really effective way. We have, what, 1,400 students, and by and large, most of those relationships go really, really well. It's not always perfect, and one of the most important components of that elementary setting is the fact that our specialists see those kids for five years, and they see how those students change, and they can alert teachers if that relationship isn't as powerful as it is with others. And they really get into knowing how those dynamics within the family has changed or how the demeanor has changed out of those students, and that's a big part of what we do. To try to build on consistent strengths of our system, we've implemented Second Step. It's a social-emotional learning curriculum, and one of the things within that, that over time becomes really predictable for students to hear it over and over and over again. There's lots of students that, when something happens, maybe they don't feel comfortable yet to share what it was that was bothering them, whether that was at home or something at school with another classmate or something even with another adult. And when they hear that message over and over and over again, even if it's a couple years later, they can share their story, and we can adjust programming and support accordingly. So that Second Step hits skills for learning, empathy, emotional control and management, and then problem-solving are kind of the big areas of Second Step. The hope is that students are able to make decisions, have the power and confidence to make those connections with each other, and then also when something's not going right with their classmates, that they're able to come forward. That might be the adult in the school, but it also might be adults at home. So the United Way kind of talks about the assets that students have. Can they name five adults that they trust and those type of things? This all kind of feeds into Second Step and the things that we try to get accomplished there. Another area that, again, at that 10,000-foot view that all students have is school-wide expectations. For instance, at McCullough, we have pride, and so personal responsibility, respect, integrity, demonstrating safety, and then empathy. And again, that ties back to our Second Step, that social-emotional learning, and having that consistent expectation for all adults to help hold our adults and our students accountable is, again, creating that environment for our kids to understand what's happening. We implement that really consistently within each of the classrooms, daily through a morning meeting type of experience. And so it's time set aside, away from academics, just to hit on this and just to slow everything down so that that environment fosters the ability for students to be able to share where they're at and what's happening. The last thing that I'll touch on is the parent-teacher conferences, particularly in the fall, is more of a goal-setting conference, and we went to that several years ago to just touch on, hey, what does your child need to be successful in the school setting? We eliminated most of the data that comes in, we touched on it just briefly, and it's really about the emotional development of our students and what do they need to be successful. And that's been the 10,000-foot view of how we create that safe environment.
Also, we really ground our behavioral supports in two areas. One is Responsibility-Centered Discipline, and another would be Responsive Classroom. And really, the power there is to help kids, especially at the elementary level, when we're interacting with people, if something happens, if we have a conflict, students need to learn first. It might be learning, how did my words hurt other people? Or how did my actions hurt other people? And so really helping them learn. And then we talk a lot about, so then, not only do we learn from our mistakes, we need to fix them. And so what does that take? Sometimes it's bringing our students together, it's creating a plan for them to be successful, and also practicing. A lot of our programs, Second Step, Responsibility-Centered Discipline, really helps students think about what it is that we're striving for, and then do some role-playing, some practicing. And so that's really beneficial for our kids. Our leadership teams are really grounded in really thinking about how do we empower our students? How do we create that caring, inclusive environment and really making students feel safe, welcomed, and excited to come to school? We've been able to bring in a few programs in the past as well to really help our students. One of those programs is through Clime Theater. It empowered our students to use words such as, I don't like what you're doing and I want it to stop. And so just being able for kids to know, all right, I'm in a situation, what do I do? Having those words, practicing them, has really, that's been powerful. We also have a program that we've connected to that's through the Wetterling Foundation and the Zero Abuse Project, and it's called Empower Me. And we've chosen very strategically to have that program as part of our work in the spring as students are leaving for the summer, and it really helps kids have more language, have more supports, and advocating for themselves. It's really neat how that program connects to those five trusted adults, a lot of the same work is happening at the middle school and the high school. And so really trying to think about, at that elementary level, we want to build that safe environment, create positive relationships, help kids have the tools then to advocate for themselves and to learn how to talk about those things. And then when things happen, how do we fix it? How do we learn from it? What do we plan on doing going forward?
So in addition to those examples, we also have Child Study and a committee called Intervention Planning Team, and that's a supportive network more focused on the adults so that we can better achieve support services for our kids, because sometimes there are challenging cases, and we can sit down and have all the different players, school social workers, psychologists, special ed resource staff, classroom teachers, and we can brainstorm in the same room about some tough issues and talk it through, just like they were talking about, having that classroom environment where we talk through tough things, could be hard feelings on a playground, let's talk through that. We have structures in place to help staff know that it's not just you on an island by yourself, that there's a team approach, and we can work through some of these together, because they are complex, and it takes a team effort. And so those Child Study Intervention Planning Team are great avenues because our school social workers are one at each building, and then we have crossover school psychologists that are shared between a couple of buildings, and it allows us to have that connection with them, because ultimately, sometimes they are referred for additional services, reviewed for potentially special education, or like Canvas Health is a partnership, the district and, between the district and Canvas Health started about seven years ago, I think, right before I came, we entered into that agreement to allow, as long as there was referral and the parent agreed to have these services provided, it's mental health services during the school day primarily, sometimes after school, or they continue in the summer, and it really does reduce some of the barriers some of our families have in getting those services, because we want the kids at school, but it's hard for me to get to Cottage Grove or Woodbury. And so having that been onsite in all three of our schools and in the secondary schools really has been a very highly valued asset that we have, because they can go through depression, anxiety, trauma, or behavior issues are some of the areas that they have really been helpful for us. So that has been a great addition over the last seven years. January of 2020, one addition that was also added to the elementary schools was adding a general ed paraprofessional, and so that allowed some flexibility to working with kids that might need that extra support in addition to the classroom teacher. And so we've been having that resource for a little over a year now, and they've had the same training that they talked about with Responsibility-Centered Discipline, and we really work partner directly with them and have that lifeline to work with the particular kids that might need some more one-on-one time. I'll kind of close with some of the things that we have been talking about internally is that we need to do a little bit better job probably in our communication with our monthly newsletter to kind of give avenues for how families can navigate that. So if you've taken a look at our December updates, we've tried to be more explicit about connecting with the teacher, but if there's something there that maybe you don't want to delve into that, there's always the school social worker, the building administrator is always open to having these conversations as well, and we're going to constantly kind of bring up some of those themes in our regular building-wide communication to families. And then another thing that we're going to be keeping to work on is kind of mimicking the high school and middle school have really good grounding spots for their counseling departments with a lot of resources, and that is something we've noticed is lacking. And so that's something, we might not have a Kennedy-McCallough-Pinecrest resource page, but we will probably develop a district-wide elementary one that's more geared to our age level, but there's a lot of resources that they have at the secondary level, and we can tailor that for our elementary families to better show what access they can have with our staff and what resources Dakota County statewide and even internally we have available. Like Canvas Health, we can have that listed out there, and how do we go through that? So that's some of the things that we're working on towards the future, and some of the highlights of the classroom and internally the structures that we use to help service students, families, and our staff. With that, we'd entertain any questions?
Thank you. Do any of the board members have any questions? It's a very thorough presentation. I appreciated it. Yes, thank you very much.
It's hard to follow those three. They set a high bar. Well, like, as I was listening to... Well, like, as I was listening to the elementary guys, you know, I think the supports that we have in place, we do have that United Way sort of web of support that we're always trying to make sure is stronger. There are times where it seems like it comes apart a little bit, but we want to make sure we push it back together. We do rely on sort of the front lines of students and teachers connecting and have a lot of conversations as a staff about how best do we get to know our kids, create connections with them, know about their personal lives, and build that trust. And that's kind of, that's what I see or we see as a starting point with that trust and the connectedness. We also have advisories, we've had that in place for a while. I don't know if you've heard about the Raider Way, when you walk into the building, you see our Be Respectful Responsible. And we're working, actually, a couple of missing pieces, though, over the last two years. We always have Raider Prep for fifth graders coming in the building, we haven't been able to have that. I think we're feeling the effects a little bit of that. And then also assemblies. So we, you know, that Raider Way, we do have a curriculum that goes through the advisories, we have a Raider Way team with teachers and staff and some parents that really craft what our focus is for each month. We have trade awards each month for kids that are modeling and doing the things that they're supposed to be doing correctly, being kind and good friend and all of those things. But the assemblies were sort of our exclamation point on that, and we haven't been able to have those. So I think we're also kind of missing those where we could have, we could have Mr. Oldham's band playing a Chicago song when we walk in, and you know, and then kids are getting involved and playing games with the staff and each other, and they can see their classmates down there. So I know that that's kind of a big missing piece, and we're trying to fill in as best we can through advisory and through those lessons that are created by that Raider Way team and our staff. A huge foundation, too, is our counseling department, and we have, we're lucky enough to have a counselor for each grade. So as, and this just kind of put into place last year when we got our fourth counselor, but the plan is for them then to follow those kids throughout their career. So the fifth graders have Brooke Johnson, and they'll have her as sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade, and you get the idea. So Brooke Johnson, Megan Latch, Ellen Radamacher, Charlie Black are doing a great job, and I'll kind of go through some of the work that they do to support all of our students through some very difficult times. Maddie Peterson, our social worker, Amy Mayer is our school psych, Molly Cirillo, we get to share with the elementaries with that district family support worker. They're also just, they're valuable resources for our kids and our community and our staff, too, because when we run into situations, they're the first people that we go to. So developing those close relationships with students, grade-level connections, and then just that ongoing work and building trust and sort of that frontline with kids. So it's a little bit, you know, from elementary to middle school, and I know Mike's going to probably talk about how things change, obviously, as those kids get older, and that building trust is maybe a little more difficult. Those counselors really, or that counseling department really does a great job of creating those connections that maybe certain students wouldn't have with the teacher or didn't feel comfortable because our classmates are all around, but they can have those one-on-one connections with kids to help them. So some of their work provide a safe space for students and families, being that communication link between student families and teachers regarding those student needs and resources, advocating for students, helping provide community support for students and family, connecting with our equity coordinator when we need to to make sure that we have the knowledge and understanding that we need for the various, for the many things that we deal with, and then just helping support and build through different group opportunities. So that's the thing that they haven't been able to do over the last couple of years that they now are starting, they have their own room now, and they're going to start doing these small groups, whether it's anger management or LBGTQ+. You know, there's different groups of students that they'll be working with in a safe, private, it's in the reading hallway over here, it's a little crazy busy sometimes during the day, but they'll be really good about how they plan those opportunities. Our administrative team works closely with our counseling department, and we have daily meetings, we have a scheduled meeting each week, and it alternates with our, what we call AdCo, which is Admin-Counselor Meeting one week, and then the next week is a wider group called Student Success. And that group is not just admin and counselor, counseling department, it includes the other people that I mentioned, our social worker, Molly Cirillo, we have our resource officer, Jake Willers comes, Gabe Moreno, our equity liaison. And then we also have a new member on our staff, our community and schools worker, Tim Slapnitzer, and he's in his first semester with us, and he is doing a great job in terms of connecting with some of our neediest kiddos, whether it's academic support, it could be social-emotional support. He's got a lot of things cooking, and I'm hoping that he can invite me back, and maybe Tim and I can come and tell you more as things develop, because he has just a lot of things in terms of meeting kids' needs and just a plethora of things. So we're also, in terms of that net, making sure that it's strengthened, looking for, we just, I just went with Mike to a community connection meeting last week, so engagement, so trying to engage more with the community. We're being contacted by groups like IDEA and some other groups in the community that we're going to, we're creating connections with and maybe bring in some things that our students need, hoping between now and the end of the year that we'll have the ability to be able to do some larger-scale gatherings with our kids, whether that be grade-level type of messages, just to address some of the things that pop up throughout our weeks. So I think that's all I have.
That's pretty darn good.
Thanks.
Well, all right. Thank you. Specifically, we'll look at the high school level as we have young adults who are looking to launch after high school. And so the developmental nature of students and then that relationship with the teacher changes, and so you might hear some differences as principals that we've outlined. Specifically for our LGBTQ+ students, that's where I really took this and tried to give some specifics around that. It's our group of students that are probably the most targeted and most at risk, and these are all great supports for all students. So in terms of direct support, it's important that our students, all of our students know that this is their school and they're belong. We are there working, but it is their school and their school experience. So all of us counselors, school psychologists, administrators, we are trained for social-emotional needs, communication with staff members, we collaborate with community members and families as needed. We're very, very pleased that we started an advisory program this last year that is a staff member every day has the same 20 students every day for 15 minutes. And then as the seniors graduate, they leave that advisory, then the ninth graders come in. So we want that school-family to be intact for all four years, and that's been a great place for every student to belong. Gender identity, it's now an optional demographic identifier, so when we're on student surveys, we're specifically asking because we want students to know that they're here, they're represented, and we want that specific information. We also, in 2004, started Gay-Straight Alliance, which has now been changed to be more inclusive gender and sexual awareness. It's a student activity group, it's an advisor that we pay a stipend to and has training, and at 40 regular students, it's one of our strongest student activities. And again, that's been going since 2004. We do have site-based therapists in a family support network through Canvas Health and Sternon Associates, so you've heard them over time, but that's a great resource. It's a collaborative resource for us, it's problem-solving, but it's direct support for students onsite. You've heard our equity coordinator, Gabe Moreno, co-located in all of the Hastings schools to support individual students as well as provide training, and then he collaborates with a lot of local equity coordinators for that work. You've also heard Community and Schools, it's been a wonderful resource, it's partnered with the United Way. Kel O'Leary is our community and schools person, is part of our regular team, and the focus there is ninth grade success. That bridge coming to high school in ninth grade is a big one. School safety is very important. We're very pleased in the last two years to really have a robust team called the Threat Assessment Team. And there are a number of professionals, and it's principals, counselors, school psychologists, police liaison officer, nurse, and it's a team that has protocols in place that if we have a situation where as a student is in danger to self or others, that we have different levels, we have very specific pieces that we go through, it's the involvement of parents, and we've used that, and it's been excellent because it really focuses on the student and getting the student and family's support that they need. Also, we have a student assistance team, so for us, that meets weekly, we look at academic behavior, health, social concerns, again comprised of all the professionals ranging from our nurse, who gets excellent information as students come in, she has the pulse of the school, but it also is academic, teachers can make referrals, we also talk about behavior referrals. We talked about advisory, that's a school-wide goal to increase our positive connections between students to students as well as students to staff members, and our goal is to increase the number of students that have a close connection with at least one staff member. There's multiple measures, but we want students to know that there is someone here that really knows them. In Infinite Campus, our information, student information system, it's recognition of student names, and we have the ability to change the student record to reflect a name. It's important to have nicknames, chosen names, and personal pronouns, and use those in a school setting to make sure it's safe for our students, and that's a developmental best practice. We talked about our Hastings School Resource Office, that program has been going for well over 20 years, and it's just a wonderful partnership. For staff, we've had additional training. This last year, we had gender inclusion in our diversity and equity policies for staff training, as well as following up for individual staff members or individual situations that came up. We also have cultural competency training, that's part of our Achievement and Integration Grant, it's also part of the AVID program to provide that training. That includes critical thinking and reflection on identity, biases, and definitions like gender identity, gender expression, sexual orientation, and biological sex. And again, that is for staff members. Another is that we've offered safe staff training, voluntary for staff members to attend the training, to learn more about LBGTQ+ issues, as well as the willing to listen and to support students on a number of different issues. About five years ago, we were taking a tour of Hastings High School, it was a group of board members, and we started dreaming about more privacy. We have a number of students that were wanting more privacy in restrooms and locker rooms, and there's a number of students that don't want to use the restroom for a number of reasons and really here's some sad situations. Might be body image, it might be not, that's not the gender of the bathroom that I want to go to. So we're, with the board's help and a referendum help, we've been able to look at some renovations to our high school locker rooms and to the restrooms to provide full privacy. School policies, we've been really looking at our student discipline being a response, not necessarily punitive, but how can we help and support? We looked at what's called the Discipline Matrix, our reporting procedures to make sure it's fair and equitable, to do two things, to intervene but also develop more relationships, we want it to be as proactive as possible. Our student handbook and district policies have been updated as well. And we know we have more growth to go as students tell us their experiences and what they're looking for. We're looking at restorative practices, we're trying to develop more and more community within our schools, and then also connect our students more to the community.
Do any of the board members have questions?
First of all, all of you, incredibly thorough. Thank you so much. It's amazing how many different resources you guys are utilizing and leveraging to make the kids feel comfortable, make them feel safe to know who they are, which I think is really, really key, is to know who they are and what they're all about. I'm going to put you a little bit on the spot here because I'm just interested, and if you don't know the direct answer, that's fine, but I'm curious. Everybody's very aware of what happened in Oxford, Michigan, and at the end of the day, at least from the pieces that I've been able to put together, it looks like right at the very end, the most critical moment, there was a breakdown. There was a breakdown within the school. You have a child that's, parents bought them a gun as a minor, that's a whole nother conversation for another day. And they brought him in, and they told the parents, this child's doing these things, and this looks like a very credible threat. The parents chose not to, this is for anybody who doesn't know the story, the parents chose not to bring him home. He was returned to class, four kids were dead an hour later. So my question to you is this, in a scenario like that, what are the protocols that we have in place to make sure that something like Oxford doesn't happen here?
It's an inexact science, and it is a situation where you have the dignity of a student maybe going through a difficult time, coupled with threats that may or may not be true from someone else, and then you're looking at what's your risk and potential. I really like our Threat Assessment Team, which slows things down. It's very, very difficult, as it should be, to expel a student or to exclude them. So to say your child cannot come back or you need to take them, we don't necessarily have specifics of knowing that. I think the concern that a lot of people had is why wasn't the backpack searched? What we know is sometimes students stash things in other places and not their backpack, but it's a complicated situation. But I think for all the 40 minutes or so we've talked about, and I'm sure Oxford did too, has tried to develop relationships with everyone, especially the young man, but when you have the threats, you have to take them seriously. It's frustrating as a parent if you're, hey, we hear this concern and we're trying to get to the bottom of it, and no, we're not trying to pick on your child, but we need to take all of this seriously. But at the end, there's some very, very difficult decisions that have to be made. But on my end, I like the Threat Assessment. If we remember in 2010, there was an incident here, thank goodness, there wasn't a tragedy that happened, but it's the thing I worry about most of my career.
And, you know, I never would say they should have done this or they should have done that because, you know, every situation's different, but I do, I'll reiterate with that Threat Assessment, the beauty of it is that it's not just reliant on one person driving it. So a person can start that process, then they pull in other people, and we start to talk about it. We would have had Jake here, you know, like, you know, so I think the things that, the way that, the smoothness of that whole Threat Assessment, it progresses pretty quickly, and I think it's a good check and balance, I think, for, it's not putting the pressure on one, we're a team and figuring that out, so I don't know if that's a...
Well, I definitely want to thank you both, and I can tell you that, and this is huge coming from me because my daughter, with her anxiety, I've asked her before, and she feels incredibly safe going into that building every single day. Because even after Oxford, I said, how you feel? She goes, I'm fine, we're fine there. So, thank you very much.
Thank you again. Any other questions from the board? Okay, well, thank you so much. So now we will move into truth and taxation.
Bob, will you pull up the budget first? And I will say, for all the members in the audience, or the group, the room who came here to see what we did with budget adjustments, we are not offended at all if you walk out before we bring up taxes. There we go.
The budget, it will be down in the action items? Nope, yeah, sorry. Okay, so we have... Okay, so we have an action item tonight to approve the revised budget, so I'm going to go through this first kind of lightly and then I'll just focus on the changes from the adopted budget to this revised budget and then I'll move on to truth and taxation, which also includes a lot of information on the same budget. So if, Bob, you'll go to page two, right here, this one, it's probably right there. Okay, so if we look at the unassigned fund balance, the first thing that we always do is recalc the pupil units based on the October 1 seat count. And the change was minus 1.05, so it was super, super, super close. However, that's in the adjusted pupil units, if you do look at the pupil units, there was a difference of about 19. So the way that works out is that overall, the adjusted pupil units were really close, but there was some varying in grade levels, so that's how that kind of comes to be. But the change from the prior year then was a drop of 10.67 students. So when we look at the revenue that's related to that, that's an additional $524,000 and that is because in that adopted budget, we had used 1% as the assumption and the state formula was 2.45. Other miscellaneous revenue was a decrease of about $39,000. I have the federal program revenue in here, just to kind of highlight that our revenue has increased by the $1.593 million, but you'll also see the expenditures are there to offset it. And then the state special ed aid was an increase of $60,000. We got a little bit additional information after our audit, so that seemed a reasonable adjustment there. And then the Oasis is an additional $107,000 for the district because we're not offering it in 2122 and we do have some additional federal funds if the middle school decides to do something similar. We move on to the expenditures, again, that first item is the federal program expenditures of $1.5 million, that offsets the revenue. Transportation was a savings, an additional savings of about $53,000 and that was just based on the reduction in the number of buses that we're using for regular routes as well as courtesy routes. So this year, the bus company was really incentivized to help reduce the use of the number of buses due to the staffing shortage, so that did help us there. And then in the payroll benefit, annual budget calc, there are additional expenses of about $100,000. So that's where we put in all the new hires updated to their actual salaries from the estimates that I had previously used and then the teachers, administrators and supervisors were all updated to actuals. So then that change to the budget is about $598,000 and a lot of that was offset due to when we approved the adopted budget, we already knew we were over budget by about So if you look at the next page, you'll see that that yellow line for the unassigned fund balance, keep going down, right there, shows that we're over budget currently by $48,000. So that's in addition to the $646 that we were off. So from there, I can take any questions if you want, otherwise I can move into truth and taxation that will kind of further have additional budget information in it.
Does anyone have any questions up to this point? All right, truth and taxation it is.
All right. So the agenda for tonight for truth and taxation, we'll talk about a background on the property tax levies, we'll look at the legislative changes that are affecting our 2002 levy, I'll share some information again on our current school year budget, we'll look at the proposed taxes that are payable in 2022, the estimated impacts those will have on taxpayers, talk real briefly about the property tax refunds available and then open it up for public comment. So the background on property tax levies, we're required each year to hold a truth and taxation meeting and there are certain requirements that go along with that. We have to provide a presentation of the proposed property tax levy, a presentation of the current year budget and then at that same time, we can adopt the levy and we also allow for public comment. This is just kind of a summary of what the calendar looks like for a tax levy, so it's about five months, you know, back in May is May and June, legislature set the school finance formulas, July, our LTFM project applications were due, in August, we do all the pupil projections that are used in the initial levy run, August, we set the date and location of the hearing, which is tonight, September, we receive our initial levy limitation and the board approved that at the September meeting. And then November, the county mails out the parcel specific notices to all the tax property owners and then now tonight in December, we're doing the public hearing and we'll certify Just the background on property taxes, so every owner of taxable property pays property taxes to various taxing jurisdictions like the county, the city, the township, the school district and any other special districts in which the property is located. And then each taxing jurisdiction sets their own tax levy based on limits and state law and then the county will send out all the bills, collects the taxes and distributes the funds back to the jurisdictions. For school districts, our levies either have to be voter approved or set by state law and then Minnesota Department of Ed calculates all the levy limits for each district. The legislative changes that are affecting our 2022 levy, so in 2021, the legislature approved an increase in the general ed formula of 2.45% for 2122 and 2% for 2223. So the pay 22 levy reflects the change of the 2% for 2223. And then at this time, there's no other legislative changes that affect it, however, it is possible that legislation passed during the '22 legislative session will impact our school district funding for the '2223 school year. This is a graphic that is provided through AMSD and LERS and it just shows where the general ed formula would be based on inflation, so there's about a $598 difference right now between where the formula is and where it would be if it had been adjusted for inflation. And here comes the information on the school district budget. As a school district, we're required to record our revenues and expenses in different funds and each one has its own specific purpose. So our general fund is for our daily operating costs, food services related to our breakfast and lunch program, community ed is the lifelong learning programs, building construction is the funds from the sale of bonds, debt service is the levy to pay off principal and interest payments for building projects approved by voters and alt facility bonds. The trust fund is trustee and that's where we have our Mid-America account and it's for the community ed retiree payments. And then the internal service fund is our self-funded health and dental and the OPEB trust is their irrevocable trust. So this just shows it in kind of a table and for purposes of all these graphs, we have always excluded the irrevocable trust, which is Fund 45 and the health and dental because those aren't really funds available for regular district use. But now this information just kind of flows into some of these graphics. So the revenues by fund, you know, 85% of our revenues go into the general fund, food service and community ed each get roughly about 3% and then debt service is about 7.4% and this is really pretty consistent year to year. The revenues by source, so our state aid revenue is about 60.51%. This year, the federal aid revenue is 7.89% and this is an increase as compared to previous years for the COVID dollars that we're receiving. And then our property tax levy is about 25% and other local revenue is about 6%. The expenses by fund, so about 77% is through our general fund and then again, the food service and community ed are in the 3% range. The building construction is for 2122 at 10%, but that's the use of the bond money and all the projects related to that. Debt service is at about 5%. And then the expenses by object area, so salaries and benefits combined with purchase services is about 75% of all the money we spend. Capital expenditures again is higher than usual just because we're spending out some of those bond dollars, so it's about 13.7%. Supplies is around 5%, debt service is around 4% and miscellaneous is less than 1%. And then this last one here is just expenses by program, so I usually just kind of combine a few of them, so if you look at the elementary and secondary, regular ed, vocational, special ed, instructional support, pupil support and district support, all of those come up to almost 70% of the money that we spend as a district and then 20% is in sites and buildings, that's the other large one. And again, it's because we have some larger projects planned with bond dollars. So then our proposed taxes payable for 2022, $17,521,507, so it's about a $10,000 increase from the previous year. And we'll break that down a little bit further here and I'll just kind of highlight overall, it's a 0.06% increase, which is really small. There are a few areas that have a little bit larger differences and I'll detail those out in just a second. So then some factors that can cause these property tax changes, so if we were to have a voter-approved referendum, which we don't this year, changes in enrollment, which we've been talking through, any levy adjustments to prior years, legislative changes, changes in the market value and also changes in the tax class rates in history. So some of the bigger areas that had changes were the operating capital, an increase of about $52,000, the leases was a decrease of about $242,000, the general fund adjustments was an increase of about $56,000 and then the debt service, an increase of $161,000. So that operating capital specifically, that's reserved for purchasing textbooks, equipment, things like that. And there was a levy ratio increase there, so the ratio increased due to the declining enrollment and the increased property values, that's what caused that difference. And the lease levy, we have two leases that we're no longer levying for, so the Kennedy Media Center as well as the joint maintenance facility with the Hastings, with the City of Hastings. So that was a decrease there. The general fund adjustments, this is made up of several adjustments, but really the net increase is caused by changes in enrollments from actuals or from estimated to actual numbers. And then the last one is the debt service, an increase of $161,000 and this is used for the semi-annual debt service payments. And there was a smaller debt access reduction this year compared to last year, which resulted in overall increase. So the impact on a taxpayer, again, there's a lot of factors that can impact a taxpayer and some of them are changes in value from their individual property, changes in the total value of all the property in the district and then an increase or decrease in the levy amounts. Cause by changes in the funding formula, the local needs and cost and voter-approved referendums. So when we look at our tax base, from last year, there was an increase of 6.64%. This is pretty close to last year, we were at 6.86% last year. And then the referendum market value increased by 5.86%, whereas last year that was 7.1%. So, kind of interesting there. These next couple pages I won't go through, but this presentation is on the website, so if people are interested in looking at it, it just will show estimates based on data from the county, so for different tax types, what their taxes would be on a certain value home. So those are available on the website if anybody is interested. And then the last part here, the Minnesota property tax refunds, so Minnesota does have some refund programs available, there's the Minnesota property tax refund and that does have some gross income requirements, but it's meant to lessen the tax burden for homeowners with relatively low incomes and high property tax burdens. The special property tax refund, so if somebody's taxes were increasing by 12% and more than $100 from the prior year, they may be eligible for this. And then the senior citizen property tax deferral program is, it has, you know, 65 and older, there's a minimum of $60,000 income and then with this one, they can defer the taxes until the home is sold or transferred. There's information there and how to access that if anybody's interested. And then I can take questions and then I can let the board open it up to public comment if there is any. I'll just say that all these presentations are available on our website under Finance Department.
So we'll start with whether or not there are any questions from the board. I'm not seeing any. So importantly for public comment, that comment has to be related to truth and taxation in this presentation. But is there someone, does anyone want public comment? Okay, I'm not seeing any. So then we will close the public comment period and move into World's Best Workforce.
Good evening, school board members, Superintendent McDowell. Every year, Minnesota Department of Education has us report out on the goals we set annually for the World's Best Workforce. So this report is an interesting report tonight due to the last two school years having significant disruptions. And so the data may be a little bit skewed and we'll walk through that. But for those of you that are watching or interested at home, the World's Best Workforce is the Minnesota Department of Education Strategic Plan. It's their way of setting what they want to see happen throughout Minnesota school districts. And the core values and areas of focus that they ask schools to pay attention to are all children are ready for school, so how are our rates of incoming kindergarten students doing, all third graders reading at grade level, all racial and economic achievement gaps between students are closed, all students are ready for career in college and all students graduate from high school. So they ask that all districts align their strategic plans with the World's Best Workforce goals. And so you may recall No Child Left Behind through federal legislation years ago, in 2015, the Obama administration replaced the Leave No Child Behind with ESSA, Every Student Success Act, and it updated this. And so that's what led to the change in the World's Best Workforce. So what's interesting is there's alignment at the federal government, at the state government and then also at the Minnesota Department of Education and we get the exciting opportunity this year when we get into the goal-setting part of the World's Best Workforce Committee to align our goals and actions with our strategic plan, our Bridge to Learning Strategic Plan. And so it's exciting to see how all of it comes together. So when you think about our strategic plan and what the community and staff and students and all of us brought together for this, it fully supports all the goals set out in Minnesota's World's Best Workforce. And so when we walked through those action cards and vision cards that were developed, those strategies and focus areas and data improvement efforts are all aligned from our strategic plan, our building improvement plans with the district vision card and with World's Best Workforce. So World's Best Workforce has a variety of perspectives. The Minnesota Department of Education, it's their way of offering district support and guidance and direction for making sure we're meeting the needs of all learners. The school district has a role in making sure that we have a robust curriculum and instruction and assessment plan to make sure that all of our students have the opportunity to be college and career ready. The school board role is what you've been doing with the strategic plan, you adopt the long-term strategic You adopt the long-term strategic plan, and then that helps support direction for administration and staff to deliver the outcomes and the experiences we want our students to have while they're with us. Then we have the World's Best Workforce Advisory Committee, and that's the Policy 601 that you just approved tonight. And that is where it is a combination of community members, staff, parents, and students, and administration that come together to look at the District Bridge to Learning Strategic Plan and the World's Best Workforce Goals, and set goals for you to approve this spring. And so the goals have been the same for the last few years, but now that we're in a new strategic plan, we'll be looking at a new committee guiding this work, so those goals will be updated. And then we'll bring those recommendations of those goals to you to approve around May or June. And then the community's role is to provide input and be part of the committee. So this is just the reminder that our 601 policy helps align this and support this as well, and I'm really excited to bring student voice and parent and community voice into the goal-setting process through the World's Best Workforce. It gives another avenue for them to share what it is they value and what they want to see our students accomplish. So this report tonight is an annual statute report that is based off of last school year. So in December, districts give this report, but these results are of last school year. And last school year had some disruption, so even the Minnesota Department of Education hasn't completed all the data assessment because they say it is statistically unreliable and not entirely valid, because so many pieces were missing and there were gaps in different learners' experiences. And so the assessments that districts did on achievement were interesting, so it's important for us to have that perspective as we walk through these goals tonight. But we've had a children-ready-for-school goal that is looking at the percentage of students who meet the criteria moving into kindergarten of being able to identify 13 upper and lowercase letters, eight letter sounds. And so if you look at the result from this fall, last spring when we started doing the HCAT, we had 41.5% of incoming kindergarteners meet all three benchmarks. And you can see that compared to last year's, that's down a little bit, which we attribute to some of those pieces of just COVID and the environment that was happening. All third graders read at grade level. This goal again has been in place for many years, and it has been that we would increase our percentage of third-grade students that meet or exceed expectations on the MCA assessment. We had many students who did not take the test this last spring due to being online or parents opting out, so we've had some skewed numbers when we look at the entirety of the data of our students and grade level. But the result is that we had 47.5% of our third-grade students demonstrate proficiency. And that is alarming. And when you think about that with the COVID gap, districts are talking about this, right? They know that they saw decreased scores, and even just the interruption to the process of testing for students with the change of environment and the stresses. But I'm happy to say that, and I think he's still here, yeah, I have to give a shout-out to Andy Larson. He is doing phenomenal work with the elementary, focusing on phonemic awareness and our phonics progression. So when we look at how our students are doing across the system, what we've noticed is that our phonics skills are lagging, and so that's where we're putting tremendous amounts of professional development for teachers and focusing on teacher, just individual assessments with students in the classroom to make sure that we're getting that baseline progression of phonics skills in place. So we're excited because we're seeing some great results already with that, and so we're excited to work on that. All racial and economic achievement gaps are closed. The goal had been to increase the number of students making medium or high growth as measured by the MCAs from 74.9% to 77%. We are unable to report on this because MDE uses the Minnesota North Star Accountability System, which is the multiple measures rating, as a way to look at growth with the MCA. MCAs typically don't report growth, right? They're a proficiency test, and so it's a test of just how students are doing in relationship to the standards. But they've developed an algorithm for MMR, multiple measures ratings, to look at how they can look at individual growth per students. So it's unfortunate that we weren't able to get that data due to the disruption, but I look forward to getting that next year because that helps us understand our students individually and how they're growing and not. We wanted to increase from 93.2% to 95% of our seniors who indicate a high level of confidence in their college and career readiness as measured by a student survey. We had 80% of our seniors report a high level of confidence in their college and career readiness last spring, and the high school's done a phenomenal job of responding to this, knowing that the extra stress with COVID and making decisions and coursework from having it disrupted and now having a full schedule again, all those changes have impacted students. And so they've put many measures in place to support that, including looking at some modified schedules to help students and focus on relationships and freshman success, building that pathway up through their senior experience. All students graduate from high school. You may recall that it was celebrated earlier this fall when the four-year graduation rates were communicated, that we increased our graduation rate during an incredibly difficult time from 94.4% to 96.1. And that lands us in the top six of the Twin Cities metro area, and that's something that we have a lot to be proud of because that was a very difficult time, and we put a lot of things in place to help students through those gaps that they may have been experiencing, especially those seniors to that last year of their high school experience. So I'm excited to see that number. Another part of the World's Best Workforce is ensuring that it's directly aligned with achievement and integration. So there are four goals that the district has set in the past for achievement and integration. There are more in the actual A&amp;I plan, but the four that have been selected for the World's Best Workforce do address racial and economic integration, achievement disparities, and look at increasing diverse teachers. So the first goal of the achievement and integration is to increase the number of students of color and American Indian students who enroll in AP or College in the Schools courses. And I'm happy to share that we met our goal, and we have 30 students enrolled this school year in those courses. And if you look at that history, we have a strong record of improvement and stabilization of this, and a lot of this is just due to the very specific work that staff are doing to encourage all students to perform at their highest level of rigor and potential. The other area is looking at increasing the number of teachers who have very specific, culturally relevant teaching strategies. And when we look at this, the original goal set was to have 30 staff trained by '21, '22, and we met our goal, we've had 30 trained. We would have many more if it weren't for the disruption in the ability to gather together and attend PD and Do Zoom. But the exciting part also is that we've had over 40 staff attend over 357 professional development sessions that Avid has sponsored. And so it's exciting when you think about the capacity that's been built and is continuing to be built at the high school. Then Goal Three is a Likert scale survey that is given to students who participate in Avid, and the Avid students have an opportunity to engage in a story arc. I don't know if you've had any information provided on story arc, but it gives voice to students and it allows them to connect and increase their skills on diversity and inclusion. And so the goal was, can we help students increase their understanding of diversity and how they can intentionally be more inclusive? And we wanted an average score of 4, and our students reported an average score of 4.7, so that proved very successful, so we're looking at expanding that effort. And that is a multi-district effort. I believe there are four or five schools that are also involved in this endeavor, and students rave about it, they just love it. And the fourth goal with achievement integration is to increase the four-year graduation rates of students of poverty by 3% each year. And so when you look at that, last year, our graduation rate for students reporting free and reduced lunch was 86.1%. Always, we want every single student to graduate, but we've put in a lot of supports for students to make that jump, and so we're looking at increasing that for this next year, and we'll probably keep a goal that's similar to that when we work through that process this spring. So, and you can see the historical rates. So next steps is through the 601 policy, we're going to start establishing a district curriculum advisory council that helps look at the World's Best Workforce annual goals and starts making recommendations and look at progress and data, and then we'll bring those to you in May or June, and we'll be connecting those with our Bridge to Learning Strategic Plan. I just had to put a screenshot of our kindergarten video. I don't know if you've seen this on the website, but it's phenomenal. Andy Lizer does a great job, and it just is a video to help parents with incoming kinders, and then just a picture of our graduating seniors as we think about that birth experience to the whole time we get to take care of them and help them learn and grow and become. So, any questions or comments?
So, Brian?
So, just a real quick question, on the, you talked about on that, the kids of color enrolling, you've, they have 30 kids enrolled in terms of AP classes. Do you have anything on how, how were there, how were there, what was their average grade, grades in those classes?
We do have that, and I could share some of that. Some of it would be in a number that would be identifiable, but I could share a collective average if that would help, I can put that together for you. But we want to make sure, because that number's so low, we don't want to identify, and we can't, but I could put that together for you.
Absolutely. The only reason I'm even asking is because the one thing I want to make sure that we don't do is because we're trying so hard to hit a number that we put kids of color in a position where they're not going to be successful. I don't want to set them up to fail. That's why I'm asking what their average grade looked like once they got there. Thank you.
Yep. And Lisa?
Yeah, and one of the final measures for the integration piece, you talked about percent of students that self-identify in free and reduced lunch, so that poverty number. I know that, first of all, getting families to identify free and reduced lunch status is difficult, and then the last two years have been increasingly difficult. Do you foresee that measure changing for that reason, or do you, have we found some ways to be successful in measuring our actual students in poverty?
That's a great question, and the difficulty with that goal is the intent is spot-on, but we can't recognize and we don't know, it's anonymous, so we don't really know who the students are that are in the free reduced lunch. Administrators don't have access to that, that is very protected, excuse me, private data. So we can do more global measures, and so we'll talk about that as to what we might think may be working for students. But it'll be interesting to see, I'll, I'll be really interested to hear what community and parents and students say about what opportunities they could offer for those graduation rates. Because those numbers are lower too, the number of students, we want every single student to graduate, however, it is not a significant number that is alarming to the point where we're going, this something is really off here. We just need to take care of each individual student to make sure they're on track to
And Rachel, on that Goal Four, just keep pushing. I mean, it's so easy to say, especially if you're like, like a great person like me, you're like, 86%, wow, it's not even a, it's not even a B+. And that's the kind of way of looking at it, but what I see more is the 62% that are there. Not the 10% that aren't, the 62% that are there, so just keep pushing. It's great.
And I would say with that, there was a lot of difficulty with COVID, particularly in families who are low-income because of parents lost jobs. Some of our students were put in positions of being the ones to be working in order to afford groceries and things like that. I do have two questions, and I'll ask them both just so I get that done. So in looking at the number of students of color in classes, I'm just curious if as our district is becoming more racially diversified, if looking at that number is the most appropriate, or if looking at percentages of students of color to see if they are proportionally represented in these classes, that what is the best way to look at that? And then my second question, oh, we know that some of our scores dropped, and I know that we are not alone in that, that this loss is universal, but I am wondering how we compare to other districts, and if you have that information?
Yes, I can provide that information for you. One of the difficulties of the district comparisons is the variation of the number of students that they did have take the test, and those students that may have been online at the time, so districts were in different places with how many students were actually in seats versus those that were online, depending upon the situation, but I'm happy to get comparable districts for you for that. And with the proportional representation, you asked the right question with that. What we're doing with the Secondary Program Review is looking at that and not the number, but the percentages, and also looking at it in terms of elective courses. So when we offer different things to students whose needs are being met by the elective offerings, what is the diversity, enrollment and interest in some of the programming? And so we're taking that holistic lens of whom are we serving well, and where might there be barriers for some students that are unintentional but that need to be addressed?
Thank you.
And to your point too, Board Member Davis, it, one of the things too is with the grad rate, that is a four-year grad rate, and so counselors still stay in touch, they still have students that they connect to do different community ed programming, to get in touch with the GED, and so we do see an increase in that number for our six-year graduation rate, so, yep.
All right, do we have any other questions? I'm not seeing any, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Then the next bit of our agenda is student enrollment.
So student enrollment from last month was increased by three. It was actually kind of split between grades though, high school and ALC was down eight, middle school up six, and the elementaries up five, so it netted out to a positive three.
Right, any questions on that item? All right, then we will go into the Policy Committee summary, which as usual, we have already covered all of the policies, but should you want to go back and look at it, it is there. And given that we are looking at, just so you know, for other policies discussed, given that one of our budget adjustment options is looking at decreasing that PE requirement, we did discuss that Policy 613 graduation requirements would need to be addressed by the Policy Committee, so. Community Engagement Committee.
Community Engagement Committee met on November 30th, and we had, so to take us back, we were discussing about the different programs that, you know, to connect the students to the community and have the community come into the district as well. So Mike Johnson, Steve Kovach, and Trent Hanson came in to talk to the committee, and it was an excellent overview of everything. I did not, I did not realize how many programs that we offered our students, you know, for this community enrichment type stuff, so there's, there's a whole laundry list of items. One thing that we did identify, and Steve Kovach was the one to kind of really point that out, is that there are a lot of opportunities for growth at the middle school. So that's something that, you know, maybe we need to start exploring a little bit more. But they had some excellent ideas, as did the Community Engagement Committee. They had some very excellent questions, and one of the things that we kind of identified right off the way is that the Chamber of Commerce has this excellent partnership opportunity with the students to, you know, get them engaged into the community, and in one of the, the items that we really want And in one of the, the items that we really want to take a look at is, is there like maybe a website or something that we can potentially put together? And I don't know, it's still just an idea at this point of what are the different opportunities within the community for students to go out and volunteer, get their volunteer time, also for community members to go out or organizations to go out and say, okay, you know, for this event, like Rivertown Live was, was a good example. I need seven students to do X, Y, and Z instead of having that be a last minute request to go out there in advance and say, okay, I need this. This is our need, you know, is there an opportunity here? So, and then Kristi did have an idea too, is, so Lakeville does a thing called Lakeville Works, and that's with the different opportunities with like Parks and Rec and different things within the community to, you know, have posters just even in the high school of, hey, these are your opportunities this summer. So doing, you know, a little bit of promotion there as well. And then we went into a discussion about, you know, the Kelsey's story. And so there, there's, you know, we had a really engaging conversation and, you know, the, the third and fourth effects of, of ensuring that we have and provide a safe environment for our students and our community as a whole. We're going to continue developing a member list of key communicators within our community. So this is beyond our students, beyond our, our families, administrators. This is, you know, what, what group are we looking at that isn't, you know, already receiving the, the Raider update? So they can be those key communicators to make sure that we are getting information out to the entire community about what's going on within our district. We are skipping, well, not skipping, we're, we're not going to have a December committee meeting, and we will reconvene on Tuesday, January 25th. Pending your questions, that is what we have.
Any questions for Stephanie? Lisa?
I don't have a question, but I just have a comment that it's really energizing to see how far this committee has come from, from inception and conception to, it was very energizing to read these minutes and hear about these conversations that are starting to happen. It's just, it's just right at the genesis, and it's just, I really applaud both of you for your work on getting this up and going.
Yeah, thank you. It is, it's really cool to see this evolve, and just over the last few meetings, we've seen, you know, just this, this idea of, you know, generating ideas into, okay, what are the tangible items that we can actually implement? And how are we going to do that? How are we going to divvy that out as a committee and, and make this actually happen?
I agree, Lisa. It is really fun to look through this and just see how the minutes have changed over the last couple months as these ideas are kind of really coming to life, and the committee is getting a feel for, for what it wants to accomplish and what it's doing. It has been really great to kind of watch it evolve, so.
Okay. If there are no more questions, we will move into action items, beginning with the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
Chairman Waits, prior to that, I'd like to move that we pull the school board handbook out of the consent agenda. The reason being that I'd like to discuss ensuring that the school board handbook is reviewed on an annual basis, the date of which I am open to, but I want to make sure it doesn't just sit there and not evolve. And I don't know that it's ensured that that will happen the way it sits currently.
Okay. All right. So, well, it is on the consent agenda, but pulling it off of the-
About review. Didn't we get that added in there? I remember we talked about it. Not as it was approved.
Okay. So if you want to make a motion to move that into an item for individual action, and then that can be seconded.
Okay, so my move, sorry, excuse me. I moved to move the school board handbook into an item for individual action.
Any discussion on that? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of moving that to an individual action item, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. All right, motion carries. So now we will look at approving the consent agenda with the board handbook moved out of that now.
Some of.
Second. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Okay. Well, we'll just jump right into the school board handbook then for an item for individual action.
Didn't we discuss that and say we were going to do a-
Yeah, I thought we did, Dave, but then when I went into the handbook itself, it's not identified. I just want to make sure that we know we're doing it. Now, I could have missed it because it's a large handbook, but I don't think I missed it.
And you may want to just tie it to your January organizational meeting as a starting point and do it as an annual review every January.
That's what I was thinking, is do it as part of the organizational work session.
So do we need to have that in the handbook, that it will be reviewed yearly? Or can we just understand and have it added to our policy committee review agenda yearly?
Can be a matter of record.
Everything.
Can do either. We can put it at the end of the book too, that the book, the intent of the book. If that's what you're voting on, that we'll just, we'll add that to the last page of the book that-
Okay.
It'll be a minimum, so we can word it, a minimum of an annual review at the January organizational meeting.
So then with that addition, do we have a motion to approve the school board handbook with the addition of mentioning that there would be an annual review?
Some move.
Second.
So just, so make sure we got this right. We're, we're motioning and seconding an amendment to the handbook.
Correct.
That's this vote.
Yep. We have to, yes, we have to vote on the amendment for the handbook first and then the handbook itself. Robert's rules.
Get the book.
So do we have any discussion on the amendment to add in that there will be an annual review? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now do we have a motion to approve the handbook?
Some move.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. All right, the 21 payable 2022 levy, do we have a motion to approve?
Some move. Sorry, Dave.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Reloading my meeting, sorry. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. The 2122 revised budget, do we have a motion to approve?
Some move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Last, do we have a motion to approve Policies 103, 203.2, 215, 401, 402, 412, 412.1, 499, 601.1, 606.1, and 606.2?
Some move. Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Last is upcoming meetings. So we do have a special board meeting next week on the 15th to finalize budget adjustment decisions, and then the school board organizational meeting is on January 5th. So those are the next two coming up.
I do have a question about next week, so that is not a work session, that is a special meeting.
Correct.
This is work session on the calendar.
If you update it, it's-
Yeah. Okay. Special board meeting.
Yep. Because we will be taking votes for budget adjustments, so that is a special board meeting. Okay. Any other questions? And do we have a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Second. All right. Meeting is adjourned.